Planning Commission meeting of December 9, 2025, between Marshall Township and the City of Marshall is called to order. The JPC meeting of November 18, 2025 is now reconvened, and the Chair entertains a motion to approve the agenda. Roll call. I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Banfield.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Hodo.
Here.
Johnson.
President.
Riggs.
Here.
Woods. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda and move the election of officers to item four.
There's been a motion by Hodo to move the election of officers. Is there a second to that motion?
Motion.
Seconded by Johnson. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote of the motion to move the agenda or move the election forward.
Johnson.
Yes.
Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Riggs.
Yes.
Hodo.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Banfield.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we receive and consider site plan SP 25-003, also known as the Millbrook Development Project, to Agenda Item Number Nine. I think it would be C.
Recommendations on new business?
Yes.
Reports and recommendations on new business. Is there a second to that motion to move Millbrook or to add Millbrook?
Support.
Supported by Hodo. Motion by Fitzgerald. Any other comments regarding that motion to add to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Riggs.
Yes.
Hodo.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Banfield.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add the November 18, 2025 JPC draft minutes to the approval of the minutes.
Point of order.
Actually, I would just like to kind of ask Brandy. But so this meeting is a continuation of last month's meeting, and so those minutes aren't technically finalized until this meeting is adjourned. And I look to our deputy clerk to just clarify that is correct.
You can for surely look at them, but we are going to be adding to them because we're pre-meeting this one.
Okay.
Resend that motion.
I'll resend the motion.
So are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote on the amended and added to agenda. Please.
The agenda.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
I'd motion to approve the agenda as amended with the Millbrooks project and the elections of officers moved to item four.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Hodo, support by Woods, to approve the agenda with the moving of elections and the added item. Any other comments, additions? Hearing none, seeing none. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. And that motion passed. So we move right to the election of officers, and we'll be electing the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Joint Planning Commission. Is there a nomination for Chair of the JPC?
I nominate Joanna Johnson.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed, and roll call vote, please.
Riggs.
Riggs, Johnson.
Hodo.
Hodo, Fitzgerald.
Woods.
Woods, Johnson.
Banfield.
Banfield, Fitzgerald.
Johnson.
Johnson. Johnson.
Fitzgerald.
Fitzgerald, Fitzgerald.
It is a tie.
Do I hear any other nominations for Chair?
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Hodo, Aaron Hodo, for Chair.
Are there any other nominations?
Nominate Johnson.
Riggs. So it's on there. Are there any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, the nominations are closed, and we'll take a roll call vote, please, Brandy.
Hodo.
Hodo, Hodo.
Woods.
Woods, Johnson.
Banfield.
Banfield, Hodo.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Fitzgerald.
Fitzgerald, Hodo.
And Riggs.
Riggs, Johnson.
You have the three to three. You have a tie.
Are there any other nominations for are there nominations for the Chair?
Hodo, Riggs.
Woods, Johnson.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. Roll call vote, please.
Woods.
Woods, Johnson.
Banfield.
Sorry. Banfield, Riggs.
Johnson.
Johnson, Johnson.
Fitzgerald.
Fitzgerald, Johnson.
Riggs.
Riggs, Johnson.
Hodo.
Hodo, Riggs.
You have a four to two, so Johnson wins. I'm curious, I don't know what word you want to use.
Four to two, we have elected Johnson as Chair of the Joint Planning Commission. I can either continue through the Vice Chair, or you can take over.
Please continue through Vice Chair.
The next nominations are open for Vice Chair.
Riggs nominates Fitzgerald.
Are there any nominations, any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, we have one nomination for Fitzgerald. The nominations are closed, and we'll do a voice vote for Vice Chair. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And Tim Fitzgerald is the Vice Chair. And now I would turn the meeting over to Joanna Johnson.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item now number four, I believe, or five, excuse me, on the agenda, it's the approval of the minutes. We have four sets of minutes before us. The approval of minutes from November 14 of 2023, approval of minutes from September 9 of 2025, approval of minutes from September 22, 2025, and the approval of minutes from October 14 of 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hodo and seconded by Commissioner Woods. I do have some clarifications in the minutes. Is there anyone else who has any discussion points on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, just a couple items on the November 14, 2023 minutes. Jery should be under Mr. Jery Bazzard. I believe it's J E R R Y versus J E R R I. And then the October 14 of 2025 meeting minutes. Second here. On the last page, where it's number four, where it says public comment respective to October 14, 2025 meeting, I think it should be for Vic Patel of Chicago, Illinois, gave public comment on behalf of the developer. So just a minor typographical. With that, there's no further discussion. Make a motion, or excuse me, vote for the, or a motion has been made and carried. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. This is time on the agenda for public comment. Those wishing to speak, we ask that you please come up to the podium. You will have three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak on public comment?
All right. Mary Wayne Adams, 622 West Green Street. I am thoroughly impressed, Ms. Johnson. And hopefully, there will be a change in direction in the overall worldview as to how local government should proceed. And hopefully, you'll, and I've already seen you do it, you will try to be faithful to the precepts enumerated in the Constitution, particularly in Article One, and particularly Article One, Section Five, concerning there shall be no law to restrict or abridge freedom of speech. And it's very fortuitous that we now have an officiating body that is numerically balanced because it will ensure that there can be no finagling in trying to use procedural gimmickry to push things through that really haven't been in the best interests of the community at large. So I congratulate you, Joanna. Very good. It was quite an amazing thing. And hopefully, on the Richard Piotz show, it had been described that the relationship dynamic within the JCP had quote unquote devolved. But hopefully, that will change now that there is a new person in the driver's seat who has already shown fealty to individual rights and the supremacy of the will of the people over corporate interests. And hopefully, things will change. There are things going on outside of this body that will be influential as to what its future decision-making will be. That Supreme Court decision in the Committee for Marshall, not the mega sites case, has a direct bearing on how the JCP will operate and the gravity of its political influence in the whole process. So I hope you understand the horsepower behind the accelerator pedal that you now have under your feet.
Right.
Is there anyone else wishing to have time for public comments? Sorry, in case you didn't hear me. Anyone else for public comments? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to our informational item. This is an informational item, correspondence from attorney for the developer for SLU number 25-001. The correspondence is dated November 18 of 2025. And in essence, it reads, if no action is taken, the applicant will file a writ of mandamus to compel the JPC to perform its duties and will seek all other legal remedies as are available under the circumstances. Again, this is in the packet if anybody is interested or would like further information on the topic. And that's informational only. Any comments from commissioners? Moving on to any public hearings and subsequent board action. Don't see anything specific on the agenda for that. So we're moving on to old business on the agenda. Again, there's nothing under that item. And brings us to the reports and recommendations and new business. One of the items is to set the future meeting dates. And Marsha, I don't know if you want to come to the podium and just, it is within the packet that you have. I will note that it does have in August the election of officers noted and outlined within that.
Hate touching that thing, sorry. Let me know if you can't hear me. Okay. Yeah, so the, I think the main question is just to confirm that the Tuesday date that we have been historically using for the Joint Planning Commission continues to be an okay date proceeding. And, you know, as business arises, we will meet. But we don't necessarily meet every month typically.
Is there a motion to approve the meeting schedule as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion from commissioners? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Hodo and seconded by Commissioner Woods. Voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have approval of our meeting schedule into 2026. Moving on to the setting of the public hearing for the special land use number SLU 25-001. Marsha, do you want to give us a little briefing on that?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, this has been a little bit since I looked at this. So the special land use is required for the drive-through associated with the Dunkin' Donuts and Jimmy John's project that is included in the packet. The, in the B4 business zoning, that is a requirement. And so that is why we are here tonight to set a public hearing to try to accommodate their special land use request. I can go through additional information, but it is, if you're unfamiliar with the parcel, it is the outlot of the, I would say, the Tractor Supply Company and the Dollar Tree parcels. That is immediately west of the Taco Bell currently. It's all asphalt parking lot. And they are proposing a three, I would say, unit, right? Dunkin' Donuts, a center unit that would be walk-up commercial and a Jimmy John's. And so the Dunkin' Donuts and the Jimmy John's are requesting the drive-throughs.
Marsha, with the time that is needed for any advertising or public notice, is it possible to have it at the January meeting or the February meeting?
Be held at the January meeting if that is, if we could do that.
So, yes.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for SLU 25-001 for January 14, 2026.
Is it January 13? I'm sorry.
Aye, right.
And that would be at 7:00 PM during our normal business hour, business meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Banfield, seconded by Commissioner Woods, to have a public hearing set for January 13, part of our regular business meeting. Is there any questions or comments related to this development?
Not this time.
Marsha, I just have one. Did we receive everything per the application? I'm assuming by now we have, but we received everything that the city requires related to the application, correct?
Yes, I believe so. I know that there were a couple of questions that we had that we haven't gotten, say, hard copy information back. But I think that we want to probably talk to the developer about, you know, a couple of the site items. You know, maybe how the delivery is, works on that site. But those aren't necessarily, you know, on the list of requirements, right? That's how we want to see that site function.
Yeah, I know that our zoning administrator, I think, has been talking with you on that. And what, that was one of the concerns, is that pedestrian traffic and the delivery based on the site rotation of traffic.
Yep, and I think part of that is also a discussion with them about like maybe when they're having deliveries versus when their hours of operation are. You know, I think that's probably something that could be discussed.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Again, a public hearing set for September 13 for special land use SLU 25-001.
January 13.
Or January 13. Geez, now I'm doing it. Motion by Banfield, seconded by Woods. We'll do a roll call vote.
Johnson.
Yes.
Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Riggs.
Yes.
Hodo.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Banfield.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are now on item nine C. This was part of the additional item, and it was approval, I think, in consideration of the site plan number 25-003 for Millbrook. Marsha, do you want to kick it off for us?
Thank you. So just a brief introduction to the project. This site is, I'm going to kind of start a big picture. The site is located off of what we would call Hughes Street, right? Or A Drive. And the address is actually off of Hughes Street because there is access off of Hughes. The overall project is consists of the 322-unit apartments plus duplexes, plus apartment buildings, clubhouse, pool, dog park, maintenance shed, right? So there's a lot of components in the overall project, but I want to make sure that it's understood that tonight, what they are coming for approval for is just a Phase One portion of that site plan information that was submitted. And I'm going to use your. So on the right side of the plan, I'm not sure if you guys can all see this. There's similar diagrams included in the packet, but this.
Can you turn that a little bit more, Marsha? Please.
Thank you.
So Phase One includes duplexes and apartments, so buildings in this area. This is the car house. And then there is a public parking lot with a dog park in this area. Those are the key components that we are looking at tonight. The rest of the site, where's, I have a huffing over, apologies. The rest of the site is just shown for future, okay? So you're not asking for approval for any of this remainder of those that site. The city, let's see, I'm just trying. And I can bring the developers more than happy to provide a little more insight into what that project's scope is. The city used a consultant to help us out with plant, site plan review for this project. And engineering also had a consultant to help with kind of review preliminary engineering drawings for storm, water, sewer, all of those kind of things. The engineering side of the review feels like they're in a place where they've gotten to the point that moving ahead should not be a problem. They'll work out the details when it gets to construction documents. But the connection point and easement coordination with where the utilities are going to run is in good shape for what our expectation is. The electrical utility from the city side is being designed to help, like, so the, what the city is required to do to help serve this, they're working on that design. But the intent is that they're using the private road easements to serve those, provide those utilities on the, on the campus. Feel like I am probably missing a lot of stuff that I would love to pass over to these guys to allow them to present a little bit more about the project.
Be more than welcome to do so, yep.
So I'd like to bring these guys up, and I'll let you introduce yourself. And I'm not sure if you want this. I'll just take it otherwise.
Yeah, I think I've got it. Okay, thank you.
I think before we get started, thank you, Tim, or Commissioner Banfield, sorry. Is there a motion to proceed with this particular development and site plan? Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. And now we'll do a roll call vote on that. Or actually, we'll get the presentation first.
Technically, you should say receive because then if we, if there's another vote later on to address.
The site plan instant.
Yeah, so this is just to receive, and then that way we can ask a question.
Sure, okay. Thank you for that, point of order. So with that, we have a motion to receive the, did we get the right numbers here? If I have it right. Site plan number 25-003. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now you're welcome to come back to the podium. Thank you.
Great, wonderful. Good evening. My name is Ryan Schmidt. I'm a partner with Indigo Design and Development. We are an architecture and real estate development company in Grand Rapids. I'm joined here tonight by two of my partners in the deal. It's my brother Greg Schmidt, who is licensed architect and a partner at Indigo as well, and Joe Elias, who is owner, partner of Grand City Capital. We are working together on this development. We've obviously been in front of this body before, and we're just excited to be here tonight, finally. It's been a long time for this concept. We purchased the Old Kelly Farm, the first acquisition, back in September of '23. So it's been over two years now to get to this point. And so we're really, we're happy to be here to present our site plan for you. When we first started looking at opportunities in Marshall, we knew that there was a demand. There had not been any new multifamily development in a long time. And so we understood through our market research and an independent study that was performed that there was market demand for this style of housing. A lot of time and energy and thought. A lot of time and energy and thought went into this concept. And I appreciate, Marsha, the way she described it. We, throughout this process, we understand that the entire land assembly is over 125 acres, right? We're not foolish in that we would not want to introduce that much housing at one time. That would be silly for all of us. So what we've done is we've tried to break it into phases here, and that's what you'll see today. Our formal request is for what we call Phase 1 of the development. We've tried, stepping away from the mic, sorry. We've tried to lay out an option of how the rest of the land might look in the future, but that's really up for future conversation. We don't know. I mean, it's, we'll see how market absorption is, how the leasing goes, and. Oh, okay. And so, it's getting worse, Joe. One sec. So that's what we're here today. And as Marsha said, it is, it is a couple of different product types. What we're trying to do is meet different segments of the market for need here. And so, and also be respective of the surrounding community. We understand that for a very long time, there's been, you know, an agricultural field here. And so how do we make the transition from the existing neighborhoods, for instance, neighbors on Kalamazoo, over to this development? So one of, one of the items that we identified early in the process was that we had to make an intentional transition with what we're proposing as single-family duplex structures. That is, the road that sits on the farthest east part of the site, and I'm sure you've seen it in your packet. Those are single-story structures that are, they're duplex in arrangement, but they're of a size really of what would be in character of a single-family detached home. We felt like that would be helpful as we transitioned into the multifamily. In addition, we've intentionally set the front buildings along A Drive as two-story structures, and then the three-story buildings are behind that. So we're really trying to respect that frontage and keep the height down along A Drive. And then, so the taller buildings are obviously in the back. And a goal of ours from the beginning has been to preserve as many trees on the site as possible. We love the site. We're so happy to be able to own it and propose this development for you. We think it'll be a wonderful place for people to live, and we want to take advantage of that river frontage and of all of those trees. And so our design here today has minimized to the, you know, the maximum that we, we can figure out a way to do any sort of tree removal. We want to keep as many trees on-site as possible. And so that's why you'll see us respecting that tree line on the back of the property along the river. And then even the placement of our future proposed dog park, which is an amenity that we understand both would be beneficial for our residents, but also as a potential community amenity. So we're having some conversations with the city of Marshall around whether that could be accessible to anyone, right, as a public amenity. That has not been settled perfectly yet. We know that we want some sort of dog park for our residents at least, but we would love it if it could be a public amenity as well. So we've had some conversations with the state of Michigan. There's a matching grant program through Patronicity, which actually helps support, I believe, the pickleball courts. You've, the city of Marshall has utilized this program before. And so we're having conversations with them about possible future matching grant support for a community-wide dog park. In addition, we've had some preliminary conversations with the city staff around if the Riverwalk could be extended along the property here. We are very open to that. We just don't have the funds to build it. But we are open and willing to work with the city on approvals and rights that they would need to extend the Riverwalk through the property. It's really over a mile of frontage, depending on exactly how you go, but it's a great opportunity for us to find a way to make a public benefit of the site as well. So as Marsha said, the first phase is 322 housing units. That consists of 50 units in a duplex arrangement, so 25 duplexes on the eastern portion of the site, and 272 more traditional sort of apartment buildings. In addition, there is a clubhouse with a community pool. There is a sports court that is proposed. We want this to be an amenity-rich development. We think we could create a really special place for a lot of people in Marshall to live. That would be a draw in the market. So at this point, you know, obviously, we've been in front of this body for the rezoning to the multifamily. We're here, and we've worked with the consulting engineer and consulting planner to address concerns along the way, or questions, I should say, to make sure that what we're proposing is in compliance with the zoning ordinance. We intentionally wanted to make sure that we were not coming to you with a list of like variance requests or something that we were trying to look for outside of what zoning would allow. So we've designed this to hopefully, you know, meet all zoning ordinance requirements. We are, we exceed parking requirements. I think we calculated about 39 parking spaces that were in excess of what zoning code require. We are far in excess of the open space requirement. I think we're calculated at 66% open space versus the 40% requirement, right? Okay, just looking over to get some verification. Obviously, setback in height and density, we're all within zoning code on those matters, which was important. We felt like the community entrusted us with the rezoning here, and we wanted to make sure that we came back with a proposal that fit within the rezoned district. So I could go on and on, I will not. But I'm here, and Joe and Greg are here as well for any questions along the way.
Right, just real quick, before I open it up with, for our commissioners, any questions and comments? Can you repeat the numbers again? You said 25 duplexes, and what was the other number? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the 25 duplexes are 50 housing units, obviously, because it's two unit per duplex. And then there are 12 other apartment buildings, which comprise 272 apartments. So it's a total of 322 units of housing that are proposed. They vary in size. We do have, it's from Studio 1, 2, no Studio, sorry. This junior one bedrooms, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom arrangement. Again, trying to appeal to as much of the market as possible.
Thank you, sorry. It is in your material, obviously. Thank you.
Great.
Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Banfield.
Engineering-related. Do you?
We worked with the engineering firm, KEBs.
KEBs, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Very familiar with KEBs, and I just want to compliment you on the presentation, not only the drawings, but the whole package. It's excellent, and you've followed through with what you said you would do two years ago. So this is, this is really exciting, what you're presenting. But I do have a couple of little quick engineering.
Great.
Don't tell them I asked you that, because I'm sure they've already handled it.
KEBs has been wonderful to work with, and we're happy. They are, we're not able, they actually had another presentation in a different community tonight. But Greg is a licensed architect and has been coordinating all of the work with KEBs, so I might rely on him a little bit for any technical questions. Also, AJ there did say that we could reach him in an emergency on his cell phone if there's anything that came up that was necessary tonight for discussion.
Well, we brought up, a couple of years ago, we brought up the, the importance of, of the surface runoff not making it to the river. So one of the things that's presented is a very large detention pond. And I have worked with them before, and it appears as if the detention pond is being used as a filtration system before it goes into the wetland. And then the wetland will absorb most of Phase 1, at least over on that side. The rest of it goes to the city in stormwater.
Greg, can you help me with that one?
Sorry, to defer to the expert here. Greg Schmidt with Indigo Design and Development. My understanding of the stormwater is that it would filter through the wetland to a newly constructed stormwater detention basin in the northwest part of the site, and then would in fact be released to, to the river.
You're talking about through all four phases?
Yes.
Not, so it's not Phase 1? Phase 1 has its own detention pond?
Each, there are several detention ponds on the site due to the topography. What we've tried to do, or what we've proposed here for Phase 1 is one centralized detention basin, but also utilizing the existing wetland pond as a first means of detention, filtration, sure.
So the intent in the long run is to get all the way over to the northwest corner?
Yes.
Eventually, with all that runoff, rather than going in and then filtered there, final filter there before going into the river?
Correct. We're not entering a city storm system that is out.
Storm's not being used at all. And then, not related to storm, is related to the traffic study? The traffic study was very thorough, by the way. And I don't understand how the, how there's not going to be a light unless that's out of your guys' hands. Is that out of their hands because it's a, it's a MDOT?
It is a, MDOT.
You're creating, you're creating the vehicular surface, the vehicular traffic?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, okay, so the, the existing conditions, the existing traffic amount at, specifically at the intersection of Hughes and Kalamazoo, it's already graded, I don't know the terminology, I think it's F or something, as a failing intersection. And it, without any proposed construction, it was the recommendation of our traffic consultants that measures be taken to improve that intersection. And their recommendations included restriping existing asphalt to create turn lanes. And I believe in one case, maybe Kalamazoo southbound, creating an additional pavement to create a right-hand or westbound turn lane. Those are our conditions that they stated should be met even before to alleviate traffic on that intersection, even without any proposed development.
Because I assume that there's going to be quite a few children there that may want to go to Hughes School.
Potentially.
Yep. And then, in regards to the traffic on Center Street, there's two sidewalks on either side of Center on your property that go up and end. There's no city sidewalk along the Kalamazoo Street. So you have two sidewalks going up, and they end at the right-of-way.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with Center Street.
That's the, that's the north entrance, going to be the north entrance to Phase, Phase 1.
I thought that was Quarry. Is that not Quarry?
I thought it was Center, okay.
Okay.
And I live here too, so. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Greg. So, so you got two sidewalks going up, and they stop. And, and there's going to be a whole bunch of people that are going to want to move further from there. So I don't know if you've had discussions with the engineer, with the city, on whether or not there's going to be a connecting walk, some way to get people across the street to, you know, the walkway, yada, yada, yada. So I don't know.
We've not specifically addressed the issue of pedestrian traffic across Kalamazoo at that point.
Yeah, but your two sidewalks end there. So people are, people are going to be in the, in the process of moving up there. They're going to be moving down the sidewalks, and then there's going to be, you know, right-of-way.
Certainly, yes. I, I would say that what we're proposing are sidewalks to be on, to be installed on all of the perimeter of our property, but not extending past the extent of our property.
So they are doing what we're asking of them to provide sidewalks on their property, right? And I agree with you that, you know, pedestrian traffic across Old 27 is going to be more of an issue as time goes on, right? But they don't really have control over the getting a crosswalk across Old 27. We have to work with MDOT on that. And, and I think that as part of that traffic study, as they get through other phases of construction, it makes it pretty clear that there's additional work that needs to be done on Old 27. And, you know, the city also knows that, you know, if this development happens, you know, we're going to try to play connect the dots with the resources that we have to provide sidewalks. You know, do we want to get these people to the Riverwalk? Yes, right? So, you know, connecting the Riverwalk off of Pearl Street, heading south, you know, crossing Old 27 and getting, hopefully, I mean, it's a great idea to connect some Riverwalk if we can, you know, across their property as an opportunity. So we know that there is some need for pedestrian crossings. And again, it's something that we need to kind of pressure MDOT, right? Also to identify as a need, because we don't have, we don't have the power to tell them what to do.
Well, not to belabor it, but human nature is going to have people that are going to want to go downtown. And are they going to walk up to, to the intersection of Hughes and Kalamazoo to cross and then come down? Or are all of those people that are coming out of your development, that's my, that's my concern about the Quarry Street? That's pedestrian, let alone the cars that want to turn left there, you know, right near that busy intersection. So you got cars backed up trying to turn left on to, to go north on Kalamazoo Street. And I, and I'm bringing this up only so that it's on record that we need, you know, not only do we need lights there, but, you know, we need something. It's our, it's our job as in the planning departments to make sure that the health and welfare of the general public is taken care of. And if you're introducing that many people, and I'm, granted, this is Phase 1, but that's still going to be the entrance that 50% of the people could use as Quarry Street. So I see that as a, as a concern, and probably more of a concern on the city of Marshall and, and MDOT. But you are bringing people up there to sidewalks that don't go anywhere, so I understand that. And we would. Pressure it.
We would be happy to work with the city and.
Pressure it, Greg.
To help alleviate it. What I will say though, to go back to your original question about the intersection at Hughes and Kalamazoo. So I've kind of addressed the, the existing conditions, but what the traffic study also states is that, that, and I should say that this is all based on the MDOT, the traffic light warrants. So they have a list of requirements that's kind of out of our control, and it's all dictated by the data. There was data collection taken on the number of trips at certain times of the day, certain time of the year, and then other data brought in from other times of the years to fill in. And what it said, and what we asked the traffic consultant to do was to devise a plan for not just the first phase, but for all four phases, stating what improvements can you expect to be required now for the existing conditions for Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3. And if you see the report, it goes into quite good detail about when a deceleration taper is needed for, for certain entrances. Or, or like, one of the recommendations for the first phase is that southbound Kalamazoo at the proposed Quarry Street entrance, that it needs a new 100-foot-long right-hand turn lane into Quarry. So that would be an improvement there that, that we would be constructing. And then it is, what the traffic study recommends is that after Phase 1 is complete, we continue to do monitoring to see what, what the actual traffic conditions are. They don't suspect that it will hit the warrant for a traffic signal at the intersection, but we are committing to having the next step of the study done to evaluate after Phase 2 is complete and after people have moved in. And then they suspect in, that when Phase 2 is complete, that there's another set of measures that would be taken, including that the traffic warrant would kind of be tripped at that point to require a signal at, at the intersection. I think that's the limit of my expertise on this. I don't want to pretend like I'm an expert. I'm just mentioning the, the conclusion from the study, as I understand it. That's all I have.
Any other commissioners, questions, comments?
I'm sure.
Yes, Commissioner.
First of all, I agree, the packet is really well done. It's very impressive, and I love the idea, the potential for the Riverwalk extension. And I love the idea, the potential for the Riverwalk extension. I think that's a great thing to keep in the back of the plan. Tim covered my two concerns with runoff and traffic. I'm wondering about the setback for the residences on Kalamazoo. Are you using the minimum required setback or are you adding, are you giving them some additional buffer room?
We are at the minimum to the, the minimum buffer is 50 feet and that's what we have to the back of the garages that we're proposing. So it's further to the residences by another 25 feet or so, if you're thinking about things like views through windows or such like that. But the actual buildings, the accessory structures, the garages are at the 50-foot line.
Okay.
Which is the zoning ordinance requirement.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you being sensitive to those people's concerns about what they might have to be looking at. And, and I'm sure you're going to hear it from Commissioner Banfield, but some screening in between there is.
It's been well.
It's going to be.
We, we did propose, there, there are a lot of trees on that easternmost property line right now and our landscape architect, we think, did a fantastic job of proposing additional trees to infill any, any holes there to provide a better screen in addition to the, the buffer of just distance.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Any other commissioners? I have a few questions. First of all, great job on the signal warrant, traffic signal warrant from the Michigan Department of Transportation. A lot of times you'd think, you know, you have to wait till it's built basically and see what happens before they'll typically put in a signal. So appreciate the comments of the fellow commissioners here as well. I don't know, Marcia, I'm assuming there's a non-motorized plan potentially at the city level that could help with the pedestrian walking. I hear he's, he has nodding, that's perfect. Okay, that's good. But specifically for the development itself, there are seven parcels, if I'm counting correctly here, that are within Marshall Township, right? And one of them, if I'm not mistaken, is pretty close proximity to the dog park, right? So help, help me understand, help us understand what that looks like. Is that going to be a separate parcel? I know you'd mentioned potentially it could be public, you know, not just the residents there. Does the city have a dog park ordinance? I'm just wondering, just considering our residents that are going to be in close proximity. And again, I appreciate having that as an amenity. I'm just asking, what does that look like for those particular parcels?
If I can say a couple of things to that. We knew from the beginning, it's very common now for new multifamily developments to include a dog park within it to encourage, you know, have a safe place for the dogs together. It was really through several conversations with the city management that we heard and through our neighbor open house, we've heard a resounding desire from other neighbors for a public dog park. It's not, we didn't set out to create a public dog park, but we just felt like we could maybe accommodate that on the site as a nod to the community and be helpful in that way because we're already going through most of the effort of building one. We did have a chance to speak with that direct neighbor who was on the easternmost parcel, he was able to join us. We had a neighbor open house on a funny day, but September 11th of this year. And we had a really good turnout there. So it was great to be able to talk to a lot of the neighbors. That neighbor in particular, he mentioned to us that he liked the tree line that was existing on the property between his house and where our future development is going to be. So we've made sure to retain that. And I think that the, I don't know the number of feet, but we're, we're far in excess of a setback for a structure, right? We're, we're nowhere near that. It's really the, the dog park area. But we've made sure to leave that buffer for that, the gentleman said that he likes that, that tree line and the landscaping there to remain. And so we're, we're intentionally trying to retain those trees. So I think we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be sensitive. I don't know if maybe you've heard of any concerns from a neighbor about that. I think that we, we think we have left enough room to make sure that there's no safety or noise concerns, but I, I think we're open to it as well. We want to make sure there's at least, like I said, an amenity for the residents, but we'd love for it to be a public use if it could.
Okay. I, I certainly wasn't aware of a September 11th open house, so maybe some of those residents obviously may have attended that from a Marshall Township perspective. I wasn't aware of it. But I appreciate, you know, reaching out to that individual and if you can, I mean, it sounds like you're going to preserve that tree line. As far as if there's a dog ordinance at the city, I don't know. Marcia, do you want to, I mean, just curious if they're going to, you know, this is all hours of the night or, you know, whatever.
So we do not currently have a dog park ordinance or, you know, accommodation for a dog park as part of our other dog leash law, right? So there's a state leash law, right? That kind of covers us, right?
Okay.
Is what, how that kind of happens. But generally, I've actually been doing a little bit of research because we've kind of seen this coming. And I anticipate that we will be trying to implement an allowance for the dog park, right? So that you can function the way a dog park would function, right?
Right. And I don't mean to just focus on that, I'm just concerned about, again, those township parcels that are still close by to it. And I will share that, you know, I don't know if they were aware we added this to the agenda, what, Friday night or, I forget the exact date here? So, you know, just making sure that our residents are aware that this was out there and it sounds like you had an open house and they were invited.
We did, for the open house, we hand-delivered invitations to all the adjacent neighbors and we also posted signs out in front of the property in advance of it on both, we did it both Hughes and Kalamazoo, yeah. And we had a good turnout. I don't know the final count. Yeah, there was, it was actually quite a few township residents that, that came. We, would you say about 80 people or so that came for the night? It was hosted in the outdoor space at Dark Horse. And we, we have like a dozen of these boards where we presented imagery. So we have some imagery, a sample imagery. This is like what the duplex units will look like. This is the clubhouse, these are the standard apartment buildings. And we showed the floor plans, we showed some information from our market study and some boards on the amenities that we plan to have in the development. It was kind of 12 boards around the, the room for residents to come and learn a little more about the proposal.
Very good, thank you. And then the only other thing I'll add is I do know that our zoning administrator provided a report as well and I'll make sure that, we'll make sure that you get it as well so we can make sure all of those items are covered, again, with that township lens, especially of those seven parcels.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes.
What, what timeline are you, are you looking at from, you know, digging the first hole to, to the residents moving in? Are they moving in the duplexes first?
Yeah, that would be the.
Before the apartments?
Correct. I mean, as you can imagine, there's quite a bit of utility work to occur first to get the utilities to the site. And there was, and that was a part of the reason why we're going eastbound, not starting on the west side of the site because the utility connections are on the eastern portion of the site. We definitely want to start the development this, in 2026. I mean, it's been a long time coming. So our hope would be kind of late spring of '26 to start moving dirt. And, and then the entire development, Phase One, I should say, could be about two years of construction that rolls through because it's not, your crews are rolling building to building. You're not, you know, building them all at once. And so it takes a while to sort of roll through all the buildings. But we'll be working utility-wise first and then obviously infrastructure and then moving east to west generally.
And then regarding, in regards to that, the site work, which is going to cause most of the disturbance of the area there before they start actually building. But the site work, because you own the other properties, you'll be able to use that a little bit as staging areas, is that correct?
This is one of the only sites we've ever had with so much land for.
Yes, I, you know, I've worked, never at this size, but I've worked on sites where, you know, you have to live in a.
A lot of our work is on tighter sites. And so this one, we've had conversations with our excavators already, there's plenty.
In that, in that regards then, there's a lot of large equipment coming in and out of there and, and I just, I know there's, right now, there's not a lot of kids going across that, that intersection, but there's a lot of cars at that intersection and, you know, you've got to be able to work the, obviously, the, all the construction vehicles within that. We just went through a year of, of this, you know, out here, which works great, but I mean, just the construction vehicles alone.
No, we understand.
So that, some of that responsibility has to be on your shoulders as well for the safety of the area and keeping the safety of the area. And designating possibly, there's the Quarry Street, not Center Street, but there's the Quarry Street entrance for the contractors and so forth, you know? So that, those kind of things would be, be great to be able to share with.
I don't know if we've shared this before with you, but the, the Quarry, the purchase of the property on Kalamazoo across from Quarry was advantageous for two reasons. One, it helps with some infrastructure costs to bring some utilities over from Kalamazoo into the site without looping all the way around. It also though, had a positive impact on traffic because there's more points of access. So it relieves some of the pressure on the Kalamazoo and Hughes intersection because you, you actually have, it's not only focusing on one. So that was why we pursued that. We did not have that in the original purchase. We bought that later because it was, and it also happened to perfectly align with Quarry, which is very convenient for transportation-wise.
We're also going to assume that Old 27, which we call Old 27, is going to be one of the access routes to the plant, coming up straight up that way and then going across on Industrial Drive. So they're going to be going through that intersection as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Woods?
Are you planning to have maybe another open house prior to first shovel full?
Yeah, we haven't, we would be, we would, we would love an opportunity to continue to connect with neighbors. We did from that, we, we made a website public that allows for, it's millbrookofmarshall.com and it allows for residents to send in any inquiries to us. And we've gotten probably half dozen of questions from neighbors so far, things that we can then answer. But I'm, I'm happy to do that. I think that in order to be good neighbors, we need to be doing more than just open houses. We need to be meeting with neighbors frequently. It's, it's, it is, you know, Commissioner Banfield's point, it is a long construction process and.
I understand.
And we want to be a good neighbor. So if, if you're recommending that or if you have thoughts toward that.
I just wonder if that was in your plans at all? Because like Chair Johnson, I was unaware of your previous meetings or anything like that. Maybe we weren't looking in the right places, but, you know.
I'm happy to do, we're happy to come and, and do more community meetings for sure. We, we wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to present this imagery prior to this meeting because we wanted to make sure that no one was surprised. I mean, this, obviously, it was, it's been a long process with, already with the rezoning and whatnot. So we've been in front of the public bodies a number of times, but I don't, I think most people are aware that there's housing, yeah, coming there. But that's why we did that neighbor open house and I'm happy to do one where certainly are. That's not a problem at all.
Any other questions or comments? One of the items, if, after the meeting, if you want to give me that website as well, but I'll invite you to a Marshall Township Planning Commission meeting and I'll connect with you after that. We'd love to have you.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Love it. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, with that, before us, as I understand it, is for us to entertain a motion in regards to the approval of the site plan, number 25-003, also known as Millbrook.
We have, we have a motion to receive and I think we voted on that.
Yes, we did.
Is that correct? So we do need it.
Pardon?
We do need that motion and to approve.
That is my understanding. Marcia?
The motion to approve and I would be willing to make that motion to approve Site Plan 25-003 for Millbrook of Marshall.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Banfield, seconded by Commissioner Fitzgerald. Any further discussion? Commissioner Woods?
Has there been any other concerns brought up from our zoning administrator?
There we have. Our zoning administrator did provide a report. I know that she has been working with Marcia on that. I think it's important that we share that with the developers as well, making sure that all of the items are addressed. Some of them, you've already done a little bit of that today. Marcia, do you want to clarify that?
So I didn't get Shelley's final reports from her. And I, sorry, I thought I was going to be able to talk again before the final approval. So there was just a couple of things that I wanted to make sure that we pointed out also. So yes, if you have, if you have comments from Shelley's report, that I would love to make sure that you go through that, but then I also have a couple of comments.
Do you want me to go?
Yeah, is that okay? You go ahead and then, and then I'll follow back up.
Sure. Some of the points that, again, I think there was a resubmission. Marcia, is that correct? There was an updated, which I think she received, I want to say November 24th, something along those lines. So I think she was still reviewing that.
Yes. So that went through, yeah, she got that, the same response that we got from our site plan, you know, we all kind of got it at the same time and we got the last comments that I then responded to as part of this packet.
Okay. So the date that I have as of right now, just to make sure we're all talking about the same thing here, her report is dated November 17th. So she has still not provided the update from the resubmission.
Okay, yeah, I just had a copy of a draft, so I didn't have anything final from her.
Okay. So I think the, the point, Commissioner Woods, is that we'll provide that once she had the chance to review that resubmission that came through, which is part of the motion tonight. So there are some outstanding items, but I, I know that she's been working on them with Marcia. One of them was, if you're wondering why I was talking about the dog park for so long, that was one of her concerns, so that's why I was adding that one.
It's nothing there that would preclude us from going ahead and voting one way or the other.
If you have a version of her report that you could make any comments from.
Sure. Again, I'm looking from a report and I apologize that not everybody here has it. I thought that you had received it as well, but the main points are we review the requirements for the MFRD project versus the PUD and clarify, which I think you guys have talked about that with the multi-use. Parcels need to be combined or lot lines need to be adjusted. You know, if there, is there any combinations that are happening with the parcels?
So not yet. And I think that is probably pending approval.
Okay.
You know what I mean? They would combine, do whatever combinations would be required after the site plan would be approved.
Okay. Ready to hear that? All right. Investigate the rezoning of parcels. I think it was, we already know that in September of 2023, these, at least three of the parcels were rezoned.
Yes. And I think that I sent, there was two separate, two separate times through Joint Planning Commission, Planning Commission, City Council for three and three. So three got done at one point and three got done at another point.
Okay. I think you sent me an email on that. I didn't have a chance to finish reading that today. Okay. Setbacks between the AG and the LI properties in the township versus the new project in the city. So there's a difference in our setbacks versus your setbacks, but we understand that. The landscaping with our properties, I think it was already mentioned that even with the dog park, to try to ensure that our, the properties that are within the township are properly landscaped and screened. Is the existing building east of, I'm reading this here, 1200 West Hughes to be demoed?
That I do not have clarification on. So actually, maybe we did talk about this. There's an existing building along, and that's, they're not going to demo it right away. So it's going to stay as long as, as long as they can keep it until the construction gets to that point, right?
Yes, it's not part of the Phase One.
Yeah, it's not part of Phase One. So it's not part of this approval.
Okay. I'll continue on here. And I thought there was some clarification on this of who owns the land. Is it the development or the property owners?
I did not include the deeds in the packet today. So all, all of those deeds, I can, I have a copy of all of those deeds.
That's okay, just, just clarify that, I think, is there's deeds related to that, right?
All of those are, are submitted. Yeah, and I could have sent those out today.
Okay. It was a big packet anyway.
It was big.
Yeah, utilities, we've already talked about that. I think her only question was, was the utility is going to be separate for each house or unit? If we know?
Yeah, the electric and gas will be separately metered. The water and sewer will not, it will, it's, we have had difficulty with sub-metering those utilities for residents, so those will just be included within the rental amount. But the, each individual resident would receive their own electric and gas bill separately metered.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Joanna, are you irrigating? I'm sorry, Joanna, are you irrigating?
Yeah, I think there is irrigation, yeah. But that would be, yeah, through the house account. Oh, you're working with the FiberNet as well. We are working with FiberNet as well to provide the fiber access to residents as well. And that has not been settled entirely, but we believe that individuals would pay for their own fiber service. We might have like a house account for the general areas.
I don't think the landscape package included an irrigation plan, did it? Okay, but you are irrigating?
I'll continue. Thank you for that. There was a comment regarding, it says stormwater report, but I think we've touched on that. Of course, the dog park, I won't go through that again. There was a question about shared drives. I don't know, Marsha, you know what that was referring to specifically?
So there, I think I do. So on the duplexes, and then it's kinda hard with a, actually, maybe I can use this. Okay, so on the duplexes, and this, you know, they've got, this is, you know, private drive coming down between the duplexes. There's requirements to allow parking in front of your garage. And so who's gonna take care of, you know, shoveling the driveway or, you know, that kind of thing? And I believe that that was part because it is a shared amenity, right? That driveway is a shared amenity. And so the, the facilities management for the whole property takes care of, of that. So it's not a coordination item between, say, two people in the duplex.
Okay. Soil erosion, sedimentation control, obviously, is required. I see heads nodding on that. There was a question, just says, well, I should say, a comment, a statement, topal while in construction, so.
Oh. While in construction, so I'm assuming.
I think there's just maybe some question if there's gonna be runoff or anything within, with the typographical issues within the construction. I'll continue on. She mentions that a fill permit may be required, a grading plan, signage, and just, you know, what the signage was going to be and maybe in the future within the development. And I think that's, go ahead.
So I think the, they might have, there are some sign locations indicated on the plan, but I don't think we've really nailed down, is there, was there a site elevation? I can't remember, or I mean, a sign.
We do have site elevations in the civil drawings. I think it's the last page of the civil drawings, maybe, the last detail page. And that's not a final design, which is a representative design that shows that we meet the, or we intend to meet the orders.
And, and I think we, you know, the city sign ordinance would dictate, they could only have so big of a sign and it would have to be, you know, so far off of the setback and all that kinda stuff.
Here's a question, I'm almost there. Will there be a homeowners association?
No, this isn't entirely a rental development, so there's no HOA or kind of association. This is privately owned rental development.
Okay, I don't know that this is a question for the developer, but I think we've already, I think there's something that outlines this within the 425 agreements, that the comment was, will residential dwellings in Marshall Township, which I think there's six or seven there, be required to hook up to sewer and water? So there's something within that with the 425, but I think the answer's no, not at this time. And I think the roads within the development, the question is, will the roads be considered county, city, or county primary? The roads in the development are gonna be private roads. And obviously, you have a public road there in front of you, so any of the permitting related to that would come from the Kalam County Road Department and/or the city, excuse me. Then we're moving on to the.
So that's Carrery Street, is that, so that's State of Michigan? Or is that City of Marshall?
Carrery. So once you get off of Old Twenty-Seven, it turns into private, so it's private. Everything in.
So they, so MDOT though controls the exit, the 100-foot sign of the exit.
Yeah.
At the intersection. But A Drive is a Kalam County Road Department jurisdictional road. Okay, clubhouse, accessory building. There's a comment, move five feet to the north, does not want this as an accessory building. I don't know what that means, so.
So this is, this is actually what I was gonna bring up. So one of the items that we have talked about with them is that the clubhouse is technically an accessory structure, you know, because it's secondary to the primary use of residential on that site, right? Currently, where it is located, it is proud of adjacent residential structures. It's not in the setback, but it is proud of, you know, nearest residential buildings. The developer would prefer to keep it that way because shifting it back, you know, affects other things on the site. I think that is something that I would like for the Planning Commission to review and discuss, if that is something we would be willing to accommodate, because it would be different than what we would anticipate as part of our ordinance.
Would it be appropriate for me to give?
Definitely.
Our, so this was an intentional decision?
Oh, come on.
This was an intentional decision. When we think of an accessory structure, we think of like a shed or a maintenance building or something like that. This is the clubhouse. This is the central building where it's a gathering point of residents and it'll have an office for the property management team. It'll also have a community room that residents can use for birthday parties, whatnot. It's also the connection to the pool is, and a fitness room is in that building. So I understand the city views it as an accessory building because it's not a housing unit, but in our mind, it's very much a primary point of the structure of the development. It is a central hub, if you will. I will say, it is possible, if it's, if, if needed, to push it a few feet. We really intentionally designed it and like where it's sitting on the site. We think it's appropriate and it should be a little proud of the apartment buildings. It is within setback. It's just, I think the literal definition is accessory structure. We don't see it in the same way as like, we're not trying to put a shed or a garage up in front of the apartment buildings. We're putting a, kind of a, in our mind, a primary use structure for the development where it is. But it, it, it is possible to move. It's just not what we desire. We'd like you to consider the location, so that's what I wanted to say on that.
Thank you, Ryan. Commissioner Banfield?
Otherwise, that would have to go through the variance situation. My recommendation would be that we list it as a allowed change to the site plan, and then we vote on that. And that by allowed, meaning the position that is being presented on the site plan. I can make that into a motion if you wish.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor, if I'm not mistaken, so I.
So this would be a.
But Commissioner Banfield, I've lost track of who made the last motion. Was it Commissioner Banfield? And seconded by Commissioner Woods? Fitzgerald, sorry, you guys.
Friendly.
Yes.
So do it, so be it.
Second it.
Unless you're, unless you're not friendly.
No, no, I second the motion. I thought I had to restate.
No.
Just for clarity for everyone here, if I've got it correct, Commissioner Banfield is that we would, approval of the site plan, number 25-003, with the change to the clubhouse as it was presented today in the site plan.
That's correct.
And it was seconded by Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Correct.
Okay, further comments?
What encumbrances do you guys would entail moving it to five feet?
I suppose, yeah, if you can, I don't know how to.
I think they're brothers.
This is a purely architectural consideration, which is that the, there's a certain symmetry to the building as designed by reducing the, the size of, reducing the distance away from the setback. It would change the, the design of the building or potentially impact the size of the pool deck that we have. It's, we, we talked about it being proud. This is such a detail, but I think it's worth noticing. I'll talk a little bit, a little bit louder here. What we have is, this is the area we're talking about right here. This is the southern, southern wall of the clubhouse. It's actually in line, in a straight line with, it's aligned with B1. It's not, it's not actually proud of it. The ordinance requires that it be set back from the face of this. I tend to think that it looks great aligned and it, it is an appropriate position for it. Can it be moved one foot back to meet the ordinance? We can do that. But as a matter of, of aesthetics and site organization and perception of the buildings relative to one another, I think it's an appropriate design choice, even though it doesn't meet the wording of the ordinance.
But it doesn't have an impact on, say, other homes in the area or nearby homes or really anything in that regard by moving it back five feet? Or, or leaving it as, as I should say, excuse me.
And the, the leasing office is gonna be in that building? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll continue reading in case, before I make the call for a vote. Let's see, we got the clubhouse through that. I know electrical and gas easement, I think that's still in the works or.
So some coordination has done, has been done, but it's, you know, not fully coordinated. The intent of all of those utilities is to run through the private street easements that have been provided.
This is a detailed question. Breezeways connection enclosed? Don't know.
There, yes, there is. I, I don't think it really, my opinion, I don't think it really matters.
Just reading.
Yeah.
They're, they're covered breezeway, they're not fully enclosed. They're, they're covered, but they're open on the ends to, you're talking about in the apartment buildings, yes. Correct. And that's a very common condition. It's not something unique to this site.
Is that right? Did I hear that right, just for the audio?
No, all of the apartment buildings have open air breezeways that are all covered, but they, so the doors face, the unit doors face into the breezeways and then you enter into the breezeway from the front of the building. But, yeah, they're all the same conditions, all of the apartment buildings are.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, two more. I think you've already answered this. The question was, are all the tenants of these homes renters? And I think the answer to that was yes, already mentioned. And here's a detailed one as well. And this was, do the duplexes have dedicated meters of electric and water? And I think we answered that as well. And then at this time, Marsha, when this was originally written, she had been, you know, waiting for the updated site plan, or excuse me, landscaping site plan. And it says, relocating the garages to the side yard for duplexes on the south side of the property, so.
And so those, there was a couple of garages they adjusted to accommodate that, that kind of same issue about accessory structures not being proud of the primary building.
That is all from our zoning administrator's report. Did you have something else, Marsha, at all that we missed?
I wanted to make sure that we talked about that clubhouse because honestly, that is probably the, the primary, you know, item that we were concerned about. That wasn't a, you know, slight, you know, detail that is, you know, sign, we already touched on sign, a lot of that stuff Shelley and I had talked about. And I think that the, I'm just gonna look at my notes really quick.
Please, yeah.
So we talked about utilities. Yeah, and as far as the outstanding kind of McKenna items that were, that were brought up by them, the only other one is they, at the time that McKenna did the review, there were still, they thought that they were gonna do a tree assessment in order to reduce the number of required trees on the site. They have chosen not to do the tree assessment and provided all of the trees that were required in order to meet the ordinance.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have.
Commissioners, any further comments?
I have something.
Yes, please.
When you make your motion, can you add Phase One? That would be my recommendation for like the Milbrook, Phase One, because we're approving just Phase One tonight, if we do approve it.
I can adjust the motion.
Please.
I can adjust the motion to say it's Phase One of the Milbrook, Marshall Park. 025, 001.
With the allowed site plan presented for the clubhouse.
A second.
You said 25001, it's 2500.
Three, sorry.
Thank you.
I was looking right at one, two.
Yeah, exactly.
Any questions or clarification on the motion or discussion? All right, I think we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Hodo?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Banfield?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Okay. Looking back to our agenda, we are under the item of board reports. Are there any comments or questions on board reports? None?
I'll start. Thank you for investing in Marshall, Michigan. It's a big project, as we said, and there'll be a lot of eyes out there, you know, going along, so it'll be fun to watch develop. Thanks also for preparing very professionally for this.
Thank you, Commissioner Banfield. Any other commissioners? All right, I just have a couple of items. First of all, thank you for the honor of serving as chair, but I do wanna thank our previous chair for many years, Commissioner Banfield. So thank you very much for your public service to the JPC and continuing on. I also, I also appreciate the presentation this evening and Marsha and Shelley's work as our zoning administrators on the review process. Thank you for your patience and I look forward to reaching out for a presentation at Marshall Township. So with that, if there's no further comments or questions, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Hodo, seconded by Commissioner Woods, to adjourn at 8:27 PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.